Welcome to a meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo?
Present.
Councilmember Lester?
Present.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Here.
Vice President Fiamara is absent. President Finn?
Present.
Let the record reflect the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Council Frank Decranis. We will now have a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Welcome to our city council meeting for April, April 1st. Before we get to Dan's, the City Manager's report, I read an article in Newsday about beach passes and in Herald as well, and they were filled with information. I'd just like to just kind of simplify it to, the beach passes for the seasonal passes that the residents buy remains just about exactly the same. It'll be a beach pass with a barcode on it, and the price is the same. And the beach passes for the people who come for the day, they will get a wristband to wear on the beach, and that price will be exactly the same as well. So the changes really aren't that drastic. No beach entrances will be closed. They will all be the same. It'll just be more efficiently managed. Is that right?
Correct.
And now we'll get to the City Manager's report.
Sorry, Finn, can I just say something about that?
Okay.
Yeah. One of the great things about the way that this is going to be done is we're finally going to have data of when people use the beach, where they're using it, when we're selling their passes. All of this stuff that we've been kind of pushing for for years is going to happen now, finally. So I'm really excited, but, well, I hate that, "I'm really excited," I like it.
All right.
All right, so City Manager Report. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. So, just so, I'm going to keep it kind of brief because we're going to have an update on the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project with our Department of Public Works and our consultant that manages that project. So anyway, let me just go through a few short things before I turn it over to them. The Saturday is the Third Annual Garan Hagan Memorial Hockey Tournament at the Ice Arena. The first game is at 2:30 and the second at 5:00 PM. This is a great event in memory of a great young man, so we encourage everyone to attend. On Saturday, April 12th, the city will hold its annual Easter egg hunt for children seven and under. It will take place from 9:00 AM until 12:00 noon at the Recreation Complex Field. Advanced registration is required, so please make sure anyone you know who may be interested goes to either longbeachmy.gov/egghunt to download a registration form or stop into the Recreation Center lobby to sign up. On the infrastructure side, the complete reconstruction of Heron Street north of Pine is in the final stages. We thank the residents, most of them at least, for their patience and believe that this project will meaningfully improve conditions on what is one of the most flood-prone streets in the city. Reconstruction of Sherman Brown Park and the Walks Utility Replacement Projects are both proceeding on schedule and are expected to be completed by Memorial Day. The citywide replacement of residential water meters, this is a little important for everybody in the city that's in a residential home. It's scheduled to commence in early May. This project involves the replacement of all 8,000, greater than 8,000 residential water meters throughout the city. Replacement will be at no cost to residents and will result in a more efficient meter reading and customer service, as well as real-time leak detection. Towards the end of this month, residents will start getting letters from Vipo, who's the installation contractor, asking them to set up appointments for the service. We've set up a page on our website that has more on the project and the meter replacement process. You can find it at longbeachmy.gov/watermeters. You will hear more on this project in the future meetings and the city's communication platforms, whether it be Instagram or Facebook. With that, I'll hand it over to Russell and our consultants for the Critical Infrastructure Project update. Thank you very much. And thank you, Russell.
Sure. So we have Greg Buckley here from DMB Engineers and Architects to give a brief presentation on the North Shore Critical Infrastructure, essentially an update from the last presentation.
Thank you, Russ. So I'm Greg Buckley, like Russ just said. I've been working alongside Tom Schaefer with DMB Engineers and Architects, working on the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Protection Project, just me today giving the presentation. Like Russ said, today's is going to be less on the background information like we had discussed at the previous meeting, more on updates that have been done in the past four to five months. So we'll go right in. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the project limits for this project extend from the western side at the boat ramp all the way to the east to Monroe Boulevard. Next slide, please. All of the, you know, players in this project, all of the utility companies, obviously, we are working to protect all of their infrastructure, as well as the local residents, especially the North Park community. That's the main goal of this project, is to provide protection for them. Next slide. So these slides, I'm not going to go through every single bullet point. I left these in just for everybody's information. It's been on the older slides. It involves the overall scope of the project. As we know, we're installing bulkhead sheeting along the entire shoreline of Reynolds Channel. We are installing the pump station that will be able to process 33 million gallons per day of stormwater. We are working on stormwater renovations, the sanitary sewer, the water main renovations, as well as the utility company updates that they are doing on their own, the roadway restoration itself, and the eventual streetlight, street lighting as well. So next slide. So I'm going to go into some of the work that had been completed prior to next meeting and then show where we've extended to at this point. These are the older photos prior to work even commencing, just as a reminder of how eroded it was in the area. Next slide, please. So the bulkhead sheeting completed to date, we do have about 90% of the bulkheading in. These two photos right here are closer to the Monroe Boulevard, so this is east of the Long Beach Boulevard Bridge. So you can see the vibratory hammer on the top there. This is the last major portion of the bulkhead installation that involves driving sheets. There are a couple other spots that require one or two additional sheets. I'll get into that a little bit later. Those have kind of their own slides, so. But yeah, we've got about 22,130 linear feet in, about 90%. So, working to finalize those. Next slide, please. Like I said, there are a few remaining portions of the bulkhead that have been, you know, the, I don't want to say the problem areas, but the ones that have been taking a bit more time to address. This would involve the railroad on the western side, that portion of the bulkhead, the national grid and telecom portion, and the Long Beach Boulevard Bridge, the portion underneath that. I'll get into those on their own slides a little bit further. Next slide, please. So the next several slides are just going to be the older bulkhead and then the older quote-unquote bulkhead that we installed previous to last meeting, and then the bulkheading we've done the past few weeks, sorry, few months. So next slide. The concrete cap that had also been installed by the dog park, you can do next slide. Waste water treatment plant sheeting, next slide. Railroad sheeting with the opening, with work still to be completed. Next slide, please. Work north of the water treatment plant, next slide, please. The Water Street in general, the sheeting, next slide. I'll say next slide a few more times. National Grid portion, next slide. By the bridge, next slide. And then this is the last sheeting slide for a while, I promise. And this is just once again the Monroe sheeting that they're working on finalizing. The Monroe sheeting itself, they are looking to close out, they're hoping for early next week. End of next week is the likely final time for any more vibratory sheeting being installed there. Next slide, please. Other work that's also been completed since previous project update, now that a majority of the bulkhead sheeting is in, they have been installing the timber cap on top of the bulkheading sheeting. The bulkhead railing would then be installed on top of this timber cap. So they've been, they've got pretty much a majority of the timber cap installed on top of the bulkheading now, so that's good. Next slide, please. The next few are items that we have to still complete. This will involve the water main, the stormwater, and the sanitary sewer pipes. The major work that's left to be completed is basically east of Riverside. The contractor is waiting on doing some of that work until they can finalize work on the pump station and the bulkheading work near the National Grid section. So, some of these are on pause until some of that work can be complete first. Next slide, please. Same thing with the sanitary sewer, we're about 90% complete with that, with just a few items left on that. About 750 linear feet installed to date. Next slide, please. And then similar to the stormwater, about 600 linear feet, 75% installed to date, waiting on certain other areas of work to clear up to continue. Next slide, please. So these two images, this is the pump station, the left image you may remember from our previous update, that is the formwork for the pump station structure itself. And then if you can see on the right, it's not super easy to see, but on the right picture, those are the four pumps on the bottom, so those have been installed as well. They've been working on a lot of internal piping inside the pump station in the past few months as well. Next slide, please. This is just kind of more of an overview of the three items I just discussed, just kind of to give more visual where the water main works, stormwater work, and the sanitary sewer work has been completed to date. Next slide, please. So the remaining construction that I'll discuss, so the first three items, the railroad crossing, the national grid crossing, and the Long Beach Boulevard crossing, those have their own slides, so I'm going to get to those right after this. The stormwater pump station and drainage infrastructure, that is an ongoing item right now. They've been inside installing interior piping, the pumps that we just saw. They're hoping to wrap the pump station up this spring, that is the intended goal. The standby generator and the street lighting, the generator is right now in the contractor's court. We are waiting for more schedule updates related to that. We had some complications with PSEG, so now we're just waiting for the contractor scheduling for that item. The water main and the sewer installation, as I said, the portion east of Riverside, we are waiting until we can get some of the pump station generator pad and the national grid items resolved, or not resolved, we can get them into place, then the water main work will follow. And finally, the Water Street and Riverside Boulevard, the roadway reconstruction itself, that will be more towards the end. We can't do the roadway reconstruction on the east of the railroad until the railroad bulkheading is complete because they do need to drive heavy equipment, and we don't want to break a perfectly new road with heavy equipment. So I will get into the final portions of bulkheading and where they stand now and what needs to be done to complete them. So next slide. So the first one is the LIR portion of the bulkheading. As many people may recall, there had been many issues with locating the utilities in this area. That namely became the PSEG items, there were conduits that were not known. PSEG provided information one or two times, that information was inaccurate. The contractor has now conducted their own test pitting on the LIR property that actually got completed yesterday. There appears, those test pits were done to confirm the layout that we had already been coordinating with the railroad. This isn't, you know, new work. So the test pits themselves came back pretty good. There may need to be one shift in one pile for the bulkheading, but it seems like there shouldn't be too much of an issue. We're meeting with the structural engineer tomorrow morning to discuss these findings. Once we discuss these findings, we would go back to the railroad, we can kind of get closer to actually scheduling an outage. So that's where we're working with right now, so hopefully in the next week or two we can have a better idea of where we stand for an outage schedule for this work. Next slide, please. The National Grid section, similarly, utility locating, we've talked a lot about it the last few progress updates. The good news for this item is that we had previously received preliminary approval. National Grid did confirm approval for this, the bulkheading layout now, as of last Friday. So right now, this is in the contractor's court. We are waiting for some items from them, namely, you know, scheduling further down the road and everything related to that. But the good news is now we have the items back in our court, so we can push these items a bit faster. So a bit of good news there. And finally, the last slide. So this is the Long Beach Boulevard Bridge portion of the bulkheading. This portion is also back with the contractor right now. We have the layout all set, we have everything set with the structural engineer, we have the inspectors lined up. We are just waiting for the contractor to basically coordinate some scheduling with their subcontractor. Once we get that scheduling, they'll share that with us and we'll get the inspectors out onto site for that work, so. As recently as this morning, they said a few weeks, they're hoping to get out, so we'll continue to follow up with them on that. And, next slide. So scheduling, some of these are more rough estimates at this point. So for the bulkheading, for the bulkheading, we, that is largely contingent on the railroad portion of the bulkhead. That would be the furthest item out because we need to schedule the outage with the railroad. So right now, that work is looking like fall 2025, that is the goal. As far as the utilities themselves, some of those are contingent on work by the pump station, as I've already said, and by National Grid. We are sitting about 70% complete on those, 75% complete at this point, to be honest. The stormwater pump station install, that is approximately 90%. We are looking to have that all set by spring 2025 for the structure itself. And then roadway reconstruction, that would be contingent once again on the railroad bulkhead. So right now, it is being shown as winter 2025, 2026, but that is contingent on the railroad bulkhead. And I believe that is the major updates, so I will open up to questions, questions from the council.
Right, so this is part of the City Manager's report. So we, do you have questions? Anybody have questions? Okay, go ahead.
Now it works. Okay. The water from the pumps, that gets pushed back into the bay, correct? How high are the exhaust valves for that? I mean, do they go above the bulkhead, or is it down? I'm just not sure. I know our flex valves are kind of low.
I'm sorry, are you referring to the?
He means the pump discharge. Where is it?
Yeah.
Where the outfall itself is? So directly, so if you're looking at the outline of the pump station, it's just the northwest corner of it, goes straight north.
But at what height?
Oh, at what height? So right now, we, the bottom invert of that pipe is supposed to be exiting at negative 2.85.
So it's exiting underwater?
Correct, negative 2.85. And then it's a 48-inch pipe.
And does it have a flex valve, or?
Yes, it does have an inline, so we are looking, we basically had previously proposed, there was some back and forth. So right now, we want, we would like an inline valve to reduce the length of the extent of the outfall pipe. That's what we're looking at right now, but there will be a valve either way, a tide flex valve. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one, what precautions or what's been put in place to make sure that the pump intakes, as well as the pump impellers, don't get clogged with debris? Because obviously, in a flood situation, there's going to be a lot of debris in the water.
So, that's kind of a twofold question, I think. So the first answer would be, you're saying debris from coming, going out towards the, towards the bay, towards the channel, coming south, coming from the stormwater that's being picked up along Water Street. So yes, so the water that, or the stormwater, I should say, that's coming from Water Street, that was already passing through a hydrodynamic separator that would be filtering out the majority of the debris, so that's just southeast of the structure. Any other debris would be very minimal that would actually be reaching the pump station.
And the pauses that you mentioned, is there a, if, we'd love to just, to be updated, if the pauses are longer than anticipated, that would eventually affect the target completion date?
Okay, so you're talking about the pauses, like more like the water main installation?
Correct.
No, those should not affect any type of scheduling right now, that work, that actually has been some of their faster work when they've been doing it. We don't anticipate that causing any issues at this point. It's more of a scheduling, it's just, it just makes it easier for them at this point. If we needed them to get in there, we could kind of have that argument with them, but at this point, it's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Right, so this is part of the City Manager's report, so questions from the public don't, aren't part of this. That's standard. I didn't make it up.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city, authorizing budget amendment to the capital projects fund budget.
This item is similar to the ones done in the past, to reallocate funds received from FEMA for the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project back into the budget as working capital. If you have any questions, either myself or Russell should be able to answer them.
A question from the council.
Same thing all the time. Same one.
Okay. Question from the public.
Okay. Close it.
Item number two, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for beach park access control services.
So this item allows us to award for beach pass access control services to Yodel Pass, the vendor that provided the services last year for electronic beach pass systems. As you're aware, we expanded the service to include scanning of seasonal passes, which required additional programming. If you have any questions, myself, John McNally, Joe Brand, and Phil are all present to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Question from the public? Yes. You come up to the podium, please. So you come up to the, yes, you come up to the podium and give your name and ask the question.
Hi, I'm Beth Sheppa, and I wanted to know the alterations to the entrances, does that go beyond the boardwalk? Does it go to the west end and the east end?
Say the question again, into the microphone if you could.
Okay.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, so you would be altering some of those?
Yes. The beach booths will be moved into the middle of the switchback on the boardwalk, on the east end, mostly the east end beyond the boardwalk. There's a change at Pacific, they'll probably be two located there to make sure we get people that go to the left of the walkover, as well as the people that go to the concession that's there. On the west end, they will be moved to the location most likely where the stairs currently are, and then, and the people can use the switchback to move down. But it's basically to make sure everybody funnels past, past the booth, and you can we can collect.
So there wouldn't be any closures of any of the accesses, it would just be, you would just, you would just, I'm sorry, there wouldn't be any closures of any of the accesses?
No, no, all the beach entrances will still be opened.
They'll all be open? Okay. Sorry. Not talking, not talking closely enough. Yeah, and it, what do you think like the cost will be to make these adjustments to the, and will we be able to revamp all of that with the?
We expect to collect quite a significant, larger amount of money this year. There's a lot of changes that we're making, we're evaluating, we'll have a total cost at the end of the, at the end of the cycle, because we're actually putting in more people as well. But we feel that we'll make that up with each revenue that's being lost right now from not collecting passes.
Okay. And who will you be hiring? I know that they mentioned in some of the articles and you had mentioned that some of the, you know, more experienced people would be manning these booths. Are you opening that up to the public, or is that to, to like, you know, city workers or?
It's open to the public. We hire people every summer season, during the beach season, we hire part-time people. So we expect to hire them through the same process, application we put in. We're looking for anyone from veterans, retirees, just people that have the summer off, teachers, et cetera. Just anybody that we get that has interest, you put in an application upstairs, and we more than consider everybody that applies.
Okay. All right, that's my, that's it.
Just to give you an example of what Dan's speaking about, on my beach, most of the time, the kid never even looks, you know, when I go past, and I have a pass anyway, you know. But one day, there was an older guy, younger than me, but older guy, working, and he worked it great. Came up, introduced himself, asked me, you know, if I had a pass, and I showed it to him. And that's what we need, you know? I mean, we want to have the kids working, but we need the kids to work. And we, having an older person, an adult there who will engage with the people going by, is exactly what we need. So that's, that's going to be very helpful to us.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll close that.
Item number three, resolution authorizing the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters for 2024 Length of Service Award Program service credit.
Okay, so this item is for the annual authorization of the Low SAP service credit for volunteer firefighters. The list included in the resolution are the individuals who met the state, required 50 points to qualify for the 2024 service award credit. I believe Joe Miller's here, if you have any questions. As you know, the point system is specified in the New York State General Municipal Law, and so we don't really have a say in where the points are earned, but we do have a way to track who earns them and who doesn't. But Joe's available if you have any questions.
We have questions from the council.
Just a comment, I mean, it's always a good time just to thank our volunteers. They provide an essential service to our community, and just tonight, Commissioner Miller, I believe they're training, and old Beth Page, they're doing training each Tuesday this month, correct?
Yes.
So that's why I don't think, I don't see any of them here tonight, because they're training to?
So just go ahead.
Keep us safe. Yes, got you. So just, just wanted to extend a thanks.
John?
Yeah, I guess more of just, I mean, with, you guys have had a busy year this year. How many, how many fires have we had so far?
The exact number, I'm not sure. I think it's three or four so far this year.
Right.
Higher than normal.
Which is, that's higher than normal for this time of year. So, and I guess just for the benefit maybe of people in the audience that don't understand what Low SAP is, so we have volunteer firefighters that go literally to hundreds, some of them go to hundreds of calls each year, and they don't get paid for it. So what this program does is, later on, when they retire, they get a very tiny pension if they accumulate enough points over enough time for their career as a thank you for their years of service. So that's what this is. And it's, it's a tiny pension, believe me, they're not going to Vegas with it.
But hopefully, if they take it to Vegas, they make money when they get there.
Well, it never happens.
I want to hang out with you, Roy. I want to hang out with you, Roy, Dan. Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public, comments? Okay, well, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
And thank all the firefighters as well, for the council? All right, we'll close that one.
Item number four, resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for the renovation of the Long Beach Police Department Headquarters front vestibule.
Okay, so next few items are mostly grant items, up to item nine. This item allows us to accept a grant of $100,000 from the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York for renovation of the Police Department Headquarters front vestibule. I would like to thank our state legislator, our state Assemblyman Ari Brown, for securing these funds for the Police Department. I'm available, and Rich DePomm is here, if you have any further questions.
We have questions from the council.
Thank you, Ari.
All right.
Yeah, I guess, just a quick comment. So, between, from, so items four to nine are all us accepting grants. We're, we're accepting over $6 million in grants tonight from the state. So, I guess this is, we owe thanks to both our elected Ari and Patricia, but also the governor as well, for, like I said, $6 million is not chump change. That's, we can do a good amount of stuff with that.
Yeah. Also, in addition to that, I'd like to thank our grant procures as well. They do a phenomenal job, they did a phenomenal job in 2024, and obviously, it continues. This is probably part of that, but keep up the great work. Thank you.
And unfortunately, they don't work on commission.
Yeah. Patty and Tyler, thank you very much. Thank you. Questions from the public, comments? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll close it.
Item number five.
You read my mind, Carrie.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for the construction of a salt storage dome.
Okay, so this item allows us to accept a $600,000 grant to build a salt dome. Currently, we are not in compliance with New York State, as our salt storage is exposed to all the exterior elements. This is a, something that has been needed for quite a while. If you have any questions, either I or Russell should be able to answer them.
Okay, Roy, you have a question?
Yeah. Dan, I, I know we spoke about this. The cost of that salt dome went up tremendously from 2019. It was like 159,000, went up to 1.1 million or something like that. Is there an opportunity to see if we can do a little better than this?
Yeah, so before, I'll, I'll actually ask Russell and chime in after as well. I do believe that the estimates that we received early were, were a little low. That being said, we have been looking very closely into what other types of domes are available, and whether we can save sufficient funds doing that. I know Russell himself has looked into just different, different communities and what has been built, and he is looking at what the best solution is for, for moving forward. I don't know if you want to add to that, Russell?
Sure. So, the, the estimates for an aluminum salt dome, and some communities have seen great success with it, some have had mixed results. So, the engineer that designed the project, L.K. McLean, is, or they're looking into, they're getting a few estimates for alternate materials. One of them, which should be a good cost savings, is for galvanized steel, so.
Yeah, and I noticed on the internet, there were a lot, you know, of steel ones, and they say they have to be specially coated, but at least we don't have to worry about the salt air.
Right. The aluminum, correct, the aluminum, sometimes it has an adverse reaction with the salt.
Right.
So, this way, and there's only a couple, a handful of manufacturers, the galvanized steel, there's a lot more players in the game, to say, so we should get a better price as part of the bid.
Because, you know, we, the city's putting in almost half a million, a little bit more than half a million dollars, so anything you can save us, you know.
Of course.
The galvanized steel should be significantly cheaper. I don't know how much cheaper, but the one worry with galvanized steel is when you scratch galvinization, it then becomes like regular steel and rust pretty easily, so we have to be, we definitely have to be cautious.
Galvanized steel's a double-edged sword. Just out of curiosity, have, have you checked with other shorefront beach, you know, front municipalities to see what they're using, just to get a comparison?
So, the Village of East Hampton just installed a galvanized steel structure, and they're happy with that, those results, so. That's why we're pushing to, for that material.
Paint that thing every year.
I know I use galvanized steel for my bolts in the, on the dock, you know, in the bulkhead, and they've got, last for years and years, nothing ever happens to them. So, I, I kind of trust galvanized steel.
Right.
We won't scratch it, though, right?
Maybe we can use your boats to move the salt to the dome.
Is there a, is there a time constraint for this research? When do we need to?
I, I'm not sure if we have a time constraint on the grant. Russell, I don't know if you know that, or Patty, if you know that. I, the, the time constraint really is tied to the fact that right now, we have to, if we bring in salt for the winter, we have to then dispose of it if it's not used over the year, because we have no storage structure, and by New York State rules, we're supposed to have it either covered or removed from the site. So, we end up buying a lot of salt and then disposing of it without ever using it, so.
We've been getting away with having it covered, but, you know, the Health Department has been on us to get, luckily, we have Health Department approval of the structure. So, within the next few weeks, the engineers should finish up their, their estimate search, and we'll be able to put the bid out.
Oh, great. That's my next question. Perfect.
So, by next winter, the structure hopefully will be up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment from the public? Yes, Craig?
Craig, before later. Did you check into stressed membrane buildings?
Yes, that's one of the, the options that they're looking into.
I've built quite a few salt domes, so that's why, at JFK Airport, at LaGuardia Airport.
Right, that's the, that's essentially the structure that we'll be constructing.
A sprung structure?
Yep. With concrete walls, yep.
With concrete walls eight feet high? That's just the best way to go with it. That's just, I've been doing it for 30 years, so.
You build salt domes?
Salt domes.
That's gotta be.
Right on the runway at JFK.
It's gotta be a very close niche, right?
Well, we were involved in the doors and it's, so that's why.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But you got to get the right stuff. If you go galvanized steel, it's just going to rust away. You're throwing away money.
With galvanized steel?
It does not last. It's just going to eat right through. The salt is going to eat right through the coating.
It scratches.
Thank you.
Just one quick, where is this going to go?
So, this will go in our transfer, transfer, transfer yard on Park Place. Across the street from National Grid, PSE NG.
We'll talk about it later, Craig, all right? Yeah. Any other questions from the, I mean that in a good way. Any other questions for the public? All right, thanks. We'll close that.
Item number six, resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for the rehabilitation of Sherman Brown Park.
So, this item allows us to accept a grant, as mentioned, for the rehabilitation of Sherman Brown Park in the amount of $390,775,000, $7075. This will offset our expected capital costs for this important project. And again, Russell is still here, if you have any further questions.
Okay.
Just a comment in our pre-meet, we're still on target, just to let everyone know, before Memorial Day, I think Dan mentioned it in his city manager's report, to have the playground and the park completed, so that's good news.
Roy?
John?
Question for the public? Comments? Okay, we'll close that, then.
Item number seven, resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for a bayfront planning study.
Okay. Thank you, Russell, by the way. This item allows us to accept a grant for $170,000 to complete a planning study for the bayfront. I have Patty Born and Tyler here, if you have any further questions. But this will be a good thing after having the North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project completed.
Okay. Question from the council? We don't have questions on the council. Questions from the public? Comments? Do you want to give a quick presentation, or?
Sure. Hi, I'm Patty Born, with Tyler Bunton. We have the opportunity at the Bayfront, Brown Bridge, Long Beach Boulevard Bridge, over to Magnolia, to utilize, unutilize property. The area is essentially considered industrial property from our history of having industrial uses there. Many people have commercial uses there, recreational uses today. As we know, the bayfront is going to be much more valuable as the water presence consolidation project in Nassau County, because that way it gets completed, so that provides more of the availability and usage of the bay itself, and we want to see better access to it in that area. It wasn't from the past, because most of it, especially to the east, was industrial use. We have five acres, four installations of redevelopment where the sewer treatment plant, where it currently is. We can do projects that help create jobs, increase our tax base, to take some of the very small residents and put it on more commercial uses. And this would all be done, of course, and planned as a study with community input, and that's very important, because there's a lot of different uses in the area, and we want to make sure that the community is heard. One of the factors that we included in the grant was to do an economic analysis, which comes from our comprehensive plan. And the idea is that there could be developers out there, whatever we can offer. But we want to know, we want to be as smart as the developers in terms of an economic yield, anything managed proposed for that area. So, it's not developers telling us what can be done and what kind of revenue, it's us telling developers what we want based upon community input and our goals. So, we want to make this a project that is community, city-driven, not developer-driven.
Yeah, right. Very good. I agree. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Patty.
Appreciate that. We'll close it. Thanks.
Item number eight, resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for boardwalk upgrades.
Okay, so this item allows us to accept a grant for $1,450,000 to fund construction of up to two new concessions and three boardwalk extensions to the south, what we call bump outs. Again, I still have Tyler and Patty here, if you have any further questions, but this should be a good improvement for the boardwalk. It will provide shade structures for our elderly and, and youth. I think it'll be a good thing for the boardwalk. Thank you.
Questions?
Patty, could you just tell us these bump, these, you know, the boardwalk extensions? Not, I'm not talking about the concessions, we all know what the concessions are. Can you kind of paint a picture of what that would be? What's envisioned?
Well, what we've talked about is what we've heard from what people want, which is extensions that can be used for multiple purposes. If they could have shade structures for people that want to get out of the sun. And we've also talked about the fact, especially considering where the funding is coming from, from the state Economic Development Division, to consider using some of the upouts for small businesses or nonprofits to have some wear showing. We talked about including electricity, possibly plumbing. It really depends on what people want, and it's feasible to the city, to make the areas useful as extensions of the boardwalk, but out of the way of people biking or walking or whatever they're doing right on the boardwalk itself.
Based on, this is a $2.9 million project. Do we have any idea what the concessions will cost as opposed to the bump outs?
I think it's about 700,000 per concession.
Per concession?
I think that was the older bridges.
I think we overpaid for them.
I think that was the previous quote.
And, and those are with bathrooms? Each, each concession, those two concessions all have bathrooms?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we overpaid.
I'll say.
And then, so the bump outs would be about 600 each? No, wait, 700, I'm sorry.
You're, you're talking about the concessions, Dan, you asked?
The concessions are 700 each, and the bump outs are about, I guess, about five.
I think that the bump outs are an undetermined amount. I think we have to, you know, once we get to that stage, we can find out. We, because we don't have any past figures, I think, to base that.
I have a question that, I'm sorry. That you probably don't have the answer to, but maybe you do. It's going to be the same wood, I assume, that, that's used on the boards now. Does that have to be the same company to, to construct that? We could use our own labor?
We should be able to use our own labor, depending on the design and the structure, but the boards themselves should be, be able to put in by our own labor. Yep.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I think that should hopefully reduce the cost, I pray. Are we responsible for overruns, or?
Yeah, I think, I think what we do is, is limit the work to the amount that the, that the grant covers. I, I think if we can do more, like by, by doing it in-house, we'll do more. I mean, right now, we have in the grant three, but if we can extend those three longer distances or, or do multiple areas, we'll, we'll choose to do that as well. The, the hope is that we can do more than we have in the grant, not less.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I guess this is a quick question, I don't know if Dan has the answer yet. If we do the bump outs southward and encroach near the dune, does that get the DEC involved? And how much time could that take?
No, it's, it's a good question. So, the, the bump outs will be from the boardwalk to the north end of the dune. It will not, it will not go into the dune, yeah, over the, the service road that we have there. We don't expect them to go out further than that.
So, how, how many feet is that out then, about roughly?
I don't know, it's, I believe it's, I don't know, 10 to 12 feet?
We said it was maybe 10 to 15 feet. As much as we could go without impacting the dunes was the idea, so.
So, we might have to go wide instead of deep?
We, yeah, they would be longer, like, yeah, length of the boardwalk, whatever.
Right, that's what I mean, we'd go wide instead of.
And then, the potential is, you know, remember, we can only go out so far for the structure that comes up to support the south side of the, of the bump out. But we can always canilever it out further.
Right.
To go over, as long as we're not encroaching with the supports into the, into the dune, we should be fine.
Okay. Mike? Any questions, comments from the public? Yes?
So, I think it's great, Eileen Heschin, that we have this grant, but of course, we also have to match the grant, and it's over a million dollars. But it would have been very helpful, I think, to the people in the audience if we had a visual of what it was, because I just listened to you talking to where it is, and it doesn't seem to make sense to me. Will the public be involved in any of this, in choosing what's going on, on the boardwalk?
Patty, there, there is a public portion of this, of this grant as well, right? There's a public engagement of, on loca, I don't know if it necessarily be as much location as it is about, well, it's actually, I think it's more about location than it is about what it would look like, et cetera. It should match the boardwalk. But Patty, if you want to add into that?
Right. It, it bases and built upon how the construction of the original boardwalk was done for those that were here, where there were community meetings to decide on the type of wood, how many concession stands. So, the idea is expanding on that and getting people's input on location, how they would be used. People may come up with unique ideas of how they can be used, which is fine, as long as it doesn't add to the budget.
Very good. It seems tough to vote on it when you don't really see what it is and know exactly what it's going to cost. I was surprised to hear that the concessions would be $700,000. You better raise their leases.
Well, I think they were talking about the previous concessions, right?
These should be 700, the previous.
Oh, right, yeah, right, okay.
A lot more? Lot more.
They were more?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, got to raise those prices.
Thank you.
Well, these will be put after bid, because they're new. A hamburger? Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, thank you very much. We'll close that. Thank you.
Item number nine, resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant for upgrades to Park Avenue and Kennedy Plaza.
Okay, so this is the, the last of the grant items. I do want to echo what Brendan said before and compliment our team that has done an incredible job in getting grants for the city. This item is a large one. This one allows us to accept a $3,359,000 grant from the Empire State Development New York Forward Grant Program for streetscape improvements on Park Avenue, as well as improvements to Kennedy Plaza. Again, Patty and Tyler are here. Again, Patty and Tyler are here to answer any questions. Great job you guys have done this year. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Just a quick, so obviously, we've been waiting many months for the state to figure out what they were gonna do with this. Can you just give us just a quick overview of what they came up with?
Sure. There, back in 2022, we applied for a new grant the state had called New York Forward, and we were awarded 4.5, the city was awarded 4.5 million. Then, in 2023, people may remember, there was a process run by the state with an advisory committee developed by the state. We were really advisors to what the state wanted, and projects were proposed by the public and the committee, and the state decided and made the awards in 2024, last year. We were awarded, as in the resolution, the funds for two projects, and there were some other funds awarded to for-profit agencies. So we anticipate the actual beginning of this project this year with the idea, it's in two parts, because we had commitment and proposals and recommendations from the state advisory committee and the public to do two things. One is to redo another block of Park Avenue from Edwards Boulevard to National, the block right outside of City Hall, and it would be replicating the block that was done by DPW about a year, year and a half ago, from Long Beach Road to Riverside, except, of course, it would be different based upon the conditions on the block. And the idea is to make it attractive, make it work better, provide resiliency, increase safety, and as we know, the one block that was done is so much more attractive, it helps the businesses, it helps people want to come into the downtown and use it. So that's the first part. So it's a duplicate based upon the template created by DPW and the consultants. The second phase would be to redo Kennedy Plaza right outside of City Hall with the idea, it's been there a long time, of respect for the, all of the ceremonial and plaques and commemorative ideas we have out there for the Holocaust and for the veterans, that that would all be respected and maintained, the bricks would be maintained that people have bought to honor their families and friends, but we redo the plaza so that a new plot, a new pool could be developed that doesn't have a lip, so it's a lot safer, for example. It could be smaller, it could be used for other purposes. To engage, part of the process would be to engage the different groups, such as the farmer's market, artists in the plaza, the musical groups that use Kennedy Plaza right now, how the city uses Kennedy Plaza, and say, well, how can we redo the plaza to make it more efficient, more useful for everyone who uses it, save money, because we can look at solar in different ways of being more efficient, because that plaza's been there a long, long time, and make it more useful as a downtown attraction.
Yeah. Patty, on part of this structure, part of this grant, we're building a new commercial building with performance space. Where is that?
Well, it could be built, or it may not be built. That was the original application, I assume you're referring to, right?
Yeah, well, it's-
Was what we applied for at the time. At the time that we applied, we had a lot of broad ideas in there, not necessarily what was evolved through the process with the state. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about the dance loft? John's, are you talking about Kennedy Plaza?
I'm not sure. It says new commercial, in the 4.5 million, we have a new commercial building with performance space, 941,000.
Oh, yes, thank you, John.
And it says remediation of a contaminated site in construction of the-
Yeah, that's not the city. That's the, what's, used to be nuclear cleaners at the corner of Long Beach Road and Park Avenue.
Okay. And, you know, I know somebody was gonna buy it, and they didn't buy it, and it has to be cleaned out, and it's spread all over and stuff like that. Just out of curiosity, they, the people who had the theater were offering at one point the city to use it as a performance space. Would that have been, I don't know what kind of numbers they were asking or anything like that, would that have been another alternative at this point, or do we want to do that contaminated space? Well, clean up?
No, no, the, the way the process worked is, we applied for and secured the grant for the city, and then the owner, the current owner of the nuclear cleaner site came in and proposed with the dance loft of doing what you're describing. They were awarded the amount of money, and nuclear cleaners, the new owner, had to go because of the contamination, go through DEC, New York State DEC, and as we understand it, they're still working with, the owners are still working with DEC to come up with a plan that can be approved by DEC. It's a long process. Once the plan is developed, there'll be public meetings on it, and then DEC will eventually agree to the plan, then the owner of the property can start the cleanup, which could take a while, and at the same, typically on these kind of sites, the cleanup can happen at the same time they can develop the property. The idea is that on the first floor, there will be retail, and on the second floor, there will be the performance space for the dance loft, et cetera. So that is still, as far as we know-
This is a private project. It wasn't something the city proposed.
And it's not part of the grant, the two parts of the grant for this are only for Park Avenue and Kennedy Plaza. The rest of the application, we either didn't get or awarded to private entities, but they're not part of our grant acceptance. The only things that are part of the grant acceptance are Park Avenue and Kennedy Plaza.
I apologize, I got confused because-
All right, so the 4.5, that's not the grant we're talking about now.
No, the amount that the city is getting is 300, $3,359,000. The 4.5 reflects the money for the entire city. Which includes other projects that were proposed by other-
Okay, so it wasn't the 4.5, it was the 3.
Unfortunately, no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't give us all the money. We tried.
Okay, all right, that's where I was confused.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Questions or comments from the public? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate how hard you work. And the success you're having. Close it.
Item 10.
Say the magic words.
Resolution authorizing the budget amendment to the general fund budget.
Okay, so this final item allows us to amend the budget to allow for funds from the state court system to offset salaries and materials for work done in-house, basically reimbursing us for all expenses to an upgrade that was done in the courts. So our labor was used, our CSEA employees, as well as materials that we bought to our city budget, to upgrade and renovate the court systems, and this is basically refunding the money from the court systems back into our budgets.
Okay, questions? From the council? Questions, comments from the public? All right, close that one.
Now for voting.
I move we block vote items one through 10.
Second?
That's it.
And move them, so, thank you.
This is unprecedented.
Councilmember Bendow?
Again, just want to thank Patty and Tyler for all their work and the state. We just accepted, or will be voting here to accept over $6 million tonight in grants, so, and also, thank you again to our firefighters. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Lester?
I'll ditto that, and I'll vote yes, too.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Great, great job, Long Beach team. Yes.
President Finn?
Yes, it's a grateful yes. Thank you.
The city manager's personnel report has been filed by the city clerk, who will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second? All right, the meeting is closed. Apologies. Councilmember Bendow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
Yes.
President Finn?
Yes. You're batting a thousand at that one. Not even the Yankees bet a thousand. Unless they have new bats. This is unprecedented.
Is that it? Wow.
Eileen Hessian, come on down.
Eileen Hessian. I haven't been here for a few meetings, so I would have brought this up at the correct time, but I wasn't here. I am concerned about the reopening of the HALB project. Eight years ago, the people of West Home and other areas in Long Beach fought against the oversized structure that Whittick had planned. We hired many specialists to look at the height, the effect on the infrastructure, water and sewer, parking, shade, and more. The project was put on hold for many good reasons. Since then, the HALB project has been an eyesore and a dangerous nuisance with its broken windows and fences, filthy pools, graffiti, and vandalism. The neighbors are not against a project, but we want a reasonable one. In those eight years, we heard little about Whittick's plans, even though I had gone to City Hall with questions. This year, Long Beach has a planning board. This is something that, according to council members, has been a long time coming, is the most important board ever appointed, and will bring a more cohesive plan to our city going forward. But at the March 4th city council meeting, Mr. Lupo discussed a special exemption for the HALB property. He said there was no reason for this major project to go before the planning board, because it was eight years old and wouldn't be fair to Mr. Whittick's company. Apparently, over the past eight years, there have been some negotiations regarding the building and necessary variances, but who did the negotiating? As Mr. Lupo said, the zoning board is not a planning board, and it would be against open meeting laws for them to negotiate. Mr. Lupo also said he and his consultant have been in negotiations, but Mr. Lupo has only been here for a year and a half, and yet he doesn't want it to go before the planning board. Why? Apparently, the work, the negotiations have been done, so the planning board would not have to start from scratch, as Mr. Lupo said. Mr. Lupo said it would be, not be efficient to go before the planning board. This is the same board touted as the most important board ever appointed, and one that will make our city more cohesive going forward. We are not going forward by looking at eight-year-old data. We will be going backward. I ask the council to involve the residents, to be transparent about the negotiations, to tell us what the plans are, and most of all, to put this project in front of the new important planning board. Please do that.
Thank you very much. I live in the neighborhood as well, not far away, and I share all those concerns. Of course, I was at the meeting when Mr. Lupo spoke about that. I appreciate the fact that people think this is the most important board that has ever been established. I don't, I don't know if it is the most important, but I feel it's very important. I would say that, I'm not making these decisions, this is me just speaking from my own knowledge, is that something that's been in, in, before the zoning board and in the works for eight years, it would be difficult to re-present it to a planning board, but that's, that's not my call, or nor is it my idea, but it would seem that way. So based on that, yes, the public should certainly be involved, at least informed about what's going to happen with HALB. I totally agree with you, I could not agree more. So, yeah, the zoning board does not conduct negotiations, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know. So based on that, we're going forward, they will re-present something to the city, to the zoning board, for their approval. It'll either be approved or denied, but before that happens, or when it happens, the city, all the residents of the city will be informed about that process. Thanks. Okay, that's it, we have no more. That's it, just one, one good and welfare. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming down. This was a relatively short meeting. Please arrive home safely. Thank you for coming.